And welcome to our reorganization meeting of 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Councilmember Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
At this time Reverend David Parial Jr. will be doing the invocation. Please stand.
Let us pray. In wise and loving God, first let us say thank you. On behalf of all who are gathered here today, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for those with the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. In the scriptures it is said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities. You have established those authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore we pray for our mayor, deputy mayor, and these newly elected council members Amy Quinn, Ron Clayton, and Eileen Chapman. We are asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for impartiality and rightness, confidence in what is good and timely, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. We pray for the agenda set before them. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and for our beloved city of Asbury Park. It is in your blessed name that we pray. Amen?
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please remain standing for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now you can sit. As to comply with the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, Annapolis notice that this meeting had been provided in the following manner. The reorganization meeting notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coast and Star Ledger on December 15, 2016, posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk.
Thank you. Number one, everybody who's attending this afternoon is deeply appreciative. It's a beautiful day for January 1st. I know there's multiple swearing-ins going across the state and in the county. And I'd like to acknowledge several people that are here today, and I'm sure there are going many other swearing-ins. We have the assembly members from the 11th District, Assemblyman Hoteling, and Assemblywoman Downing here, and we have Congressman Pallone here. That's deeply appreciated. And I can honestly say whenever Asbury Park has needed help from either of the three, they've gotten back to us within 24 hours. They've been a great help to Asbury Park and will continue to be so. So again, thank you.
We'll now continue on to the swearing-in of the newly elected officials by the Honorable Daniel J. D. Benedetto. The first one is swearing-in of Councilmember Amy Quinn.
Raise your right hand, please.
Your right hand.
Keep after me. I, Amy Quinn?
I, Amy Quinn?
I, Amy Quinn?
I, Amy Quinn?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith?
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same?
And to the governments?
And to the governments?
Established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly?
And justly?
Perform all of the duties?
Perform all of the duties?
Of the office of?
Of the office of?
City of Asbury Park Council Members?
City of Asbury Park Council Members?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
So help me God.
Next is the swearing-in of Councilmember B. Yvonne Clayton.
Okay, raise your right hand. I, B. Yvonne Clayton?
I, B. Yvonne Clayton?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
That I will bear true faith?
I will bear true faith?
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same?
And to the governments?
And to the governments?
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly perform?
And justly perform?
All of the duties?
All of the duties?
Of the office of City of Asbury Park Council Members?
Of the office of City of Asbury Park Council Members?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
So help me God?
All right, and next is the swearing-in of Councilmember Arneen Chapman.
Keep after me, please. I, Eileen Chapman?
I, Eileen Chapman?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And? And to the governments established in the United States?
And to the governments established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly perform?
And justly perform?
All of the duties?
All of the duties?
Of the office of City Council Member?
Of City Council Member?
Of the City of Asbury?
Of City Council Member?
Of the City of Asbury Park?
Of the City of Asbury Park?
According to the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability?
So help me God?
Okay, before we go on to the next item on the agenda, I'd just like to acknowledge Mayor Siciliano for Motion Township has joined us and...
All right, now we're on to nomination for deputy mayor. I open the floor for any nominations for deputy mayor for 2017. I need a name.
Amy Quinn?
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll have the swearing-in of the deputy mayor by the Honorable Daniel D. Benedetto.
Keep your hand right this side.
You're back. Keep that for me. I, Amy Quinn?
I, Amy Quinn?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the governments?
And to the governments?
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly perform?
And justly perform?
All of the duties?
All of the duties?
Of the office?
Of the office?
Of City of Asbury Park Deputy Mayor?
Of City of Asbury Park Deputy Mayor?
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities?
So help me God?
So help me God.
All right, now all the fun stuff is over. Now it's time to do business. We have our consent agenda. We have 22 items on this consent agenda, so bear with me. Resolution 2017-1, Appointment of Deputy Mayor. Resolution 2017-2, Resolution Appointing the Deputy City Clerk for the City of Asbury Park. Resolution 2017-3, Resolution Designating the Official Newspapers for the City of Asbury Park for 2017. Resolution 2017-4, Resolution Providing for the 2017 Tapware Budget Appropriations. Resolution 2017-5, Resolution Adopting Cash Management Plan for the City of Asbury Park. Resolution 2017-6, Resolution Adopting a Debt Management and Capital Policy. Resolution 2017-7, Resolution of Mayor and Council of the City of Asbury Park Designating the Depositories wherein all public monies and other funds for the municipality shall be kept. Resolution 2017-8, Resolution of Mayor, City Council, and City of Asbury Park Fixing a Rate of Interest to Be Charged on Delinquent Taxes, Assessments, and Sewer Accounts for 2017. Resolution 2017-9, Authorizing Issuance of In-Term Checks. Resolution 2017-10, Resolution Authorizing Premiums to the Municipality After Five Years. Resolution 2017-11, Resolution Authorizing Issuance of Certificate of Redemption for Tax Sale Certificates Due to the Inability to Locate the Original Tax Sale Certificates. 2017-12, Resolution Establishing the Service Charge for Return Checks or Written Instruments. 2017-13, Resolution Providing for Fees for Tax Sales Certificate Redemption Calculations. Resolution 2017-14, Resolution to Cancel Taxes on City-Owned Property. 2017-15, Resolution to Credit Sewer Accounts for Deduct Meter. 2017-16, Resolution Authorizing the Tax Assessor to Act as an Agent for the City of Asbury Park for the Purpose of Filling and Settling Tax Appeals on behalf of the Taxing District for the Tax Year 2017. 2017-17, Designation of Public Agency Compliance Officer. 2017-18, Appointing a Fund Commissioner and Alternate to the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. 2017-19, Appointment of ADA Compliance Officer and Coordinator. 2017-20, Appointment of Recycling Coordinator. 2017-21, Authorizing the City Clerk to Execute All Bingo-Raffle Games/Chance Applications that Meet All the Provisions Pursuant to the State Statute 2017 Calendar Year. And 2017-22, Authorizing the City Clerk to Execute All of the City of Asbury Park Fire Department Member Enrollment into New Jersey State Firemen's Association for the 2017 Calendar Year. Is there any items that the council wishes to remove off the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to move?
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Onto regular individual resolutions. Resolution 2017-23, Resolution Establishing Meeting Dates for 2017. Can I have a motion to move, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2017-24, Resolution Appointing Municipal Court Judge for a Three-Year Term. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
We did this, I think, two years ago. We got criticized. You gotta mention names. Everybody from here on down.
Daniel J. D. Benedetto?
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-25, Appointment of Frederick C. Raffetto, Esquire, to Serve as Municipal Attorney for the City and Authorizing the Execution of Agreement for Professional Legal Services Associated Therewith. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-26, Appointing Law Offices of Stephen S. Glickman, LLC, to Serve as Labor Counsel for the City and Authorizing the Execution of Agreement for Professional Legal Services Associated Therewith. Motion to move resolution, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-27, Appointing Archon Greiner, PC, to Serve as Bond Counsel for the City and Authorizing the Execution of Agreement for Professional Services Associated Therewith. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-28, Appointing Harry Hossauter, Esquire, to Serve as Special Counsel, Tax Counsel, for the City and Authorizing the Execution of Agreement for Professional Legal Services Associated Therewith. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-29, Appointing Wiss &amp; Company, LLP, to Serve as the Auditor for the City and Authorizing the Execution of an Agreement for Professional Services Therewith. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-30, Authorizing the Execution of Agreement for Professional Engineering Services with T&amp;M Associates. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-31, Authorizing the Execution of Agreement for Professional Appraisal Services to BRB Evaluations, Pamela J. Bordasky, MAIASACTA. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-32, Appointing G.Gem Insurance Agency to Serve as the Insurance Brokerage Consultant Risk Management and Authorize the Execution of Agreement for Professional Services Associated Therewith. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-33, Appointing Members to the Zoning Board of Adjustments. The appointments the council are looking to make this evening would be Eric Lepio with the term expiring 12/31/20, Russell Lewis' term expires 12/31/20, and Brittany Ashman as an alternate one, term expiring 12/31/18. Can I have a motion to move that resolution, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-34, Appointing Members to the Planning Board, Class 3 and 4. The members the council are appointing this evening is Councilmember Yvonne Clayton as a Class 2 with a term expiring 12/31/17. Alexis Taylor, Class 4, term expired 12/31/20. Rick Lambert, Class 4, term expires 12/31/20. Sarah Ann Towery, Class 4, term expires 12/31/20. And Barbara Krazak, alternate term expires 12/31/18. Can I have a motion to accept those appointments?
One quick correction. The appointment of Councilwoman Clayton is as a Class 3. I believe you mentioned Class 2 when you were reading.
I apologize. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-35, Authorizing Appointments to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission. Council wishes to appoint Nancy Sabino with a term expiring 12/31/2021, and Tom Colusa, term expiring 12/31/2021. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-36, Authorizing Appointments to the Public Arc Committee. Council wishes to appoint Deputy Mayor Quinn with a term expiring 12/31/21, Michelle Alonso with a term expiring 12/31/21, and Ellen Gaynor as an alternate one with a term expiring 12/31/21. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-37, Authorizing Appointments to the Asbury Park ATV, Asbury Park TV Committee. Appointments are: Here's Sidoo, expiration 12/31/19. Deputy Mayor Quinn, expiration 12/31/17. Ginny Ottley, expiration 12/31/18. Ed Salvis, 12/31/2017. Jeffrey Seeds, 12/31/18. Michael Sedano, 12/31/19. Hannah Walker, 12/31/17. Jill Bartlett, term expiring 12/31/18. Nate McAllister, 12/31/17. Danielle Bola, 12/31/19. And Eileen Reinhardt, 12/31/2018. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
2017-38, Appointment to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Council wishes to appoint the following. Councilmember Kendall for a term expiring 12/31/2017. All the terms for Recreation Commission is going to expire until 12/31/2017. Councilmember Chapman, Leisha Floyd, Esther Karski?
The car, yes.
Torrin Jordan, Angela Brown, Nancy Sabino, Angela Anderson, Douglas Eagles, Jesse Ricks, and Rachel Rainey. Can I have a motion to appoint those members, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-39, Establishing a Parking Advisory Committee in and for the City of Asbury Park. The members are, with all term expiring 12/31/17, Mayor Moore, Michael Manzella, Jean Dello, Barbara Krazak, Maggie Quinn, Rebecca Carvalho, William West, Brett Morgan, and Amber Kuna. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-40, Establishing a Code Enforcement Quality of Life Committee in and for the City of Asbury Park and Authorizing Appointments There Too. Again, all these terms expire 12/31/17. Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Chapman? Ron McEwen? Jan Sparrow? Ellie K. Mack? Okay. Hannah Walker? Norman Robertson? Trudy Syfax? Rita Williams? Terry Tedia? Greg Hopson? Bonnie Barrett? And Melanie? Nestor? Can I have a motion to move those, please?
Move it.
Move it.
Go ahead.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-41, Establishing Community Development Block Grant Committee in and for the City of Asbury Park and Authorizing Appointments There Too. All these Terms expire 12/31/2017. Mayor Moore, Deputy Mayor Quinn, Cassandra Dickerson, Leisha Floyd, Janice Mulloy, Susan Maynard, and Patrick Jacunto. Can I have a motion to appoint those members, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-42, Authorizing Appointments to the Deal Lake Commission. I have two Members, Jeannie Toller with an Expiration 12/31/17, and Andrew Chamberry, who's an Alternate, with a Term Expiring 12/31/17. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have 2017-43, Appointing Redevelopment Councils and Authorizing the Execution of Agreements for Professional Services Associated therewith. Can I have a motion?
Can you break those into two, Cindy? There's two different appointments for that, right?
Correct.
Can you, can you break that to two different?
Yes.
We can, yeah.
Can you break it into two?
They would be two different resolutions. Okay, so we'll do 2017-43. We'll make that McMannaman in Scotland, and then we'll do 43A. And we'll make that Maserati. Right, Maserati. Okay, so the first one, I need a motion to, for McMannaman in Scotland?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quin, Clayton, sorry. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And then we'll do 2017-43A for Maserati. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And then we'll go to 2017-44, Appointing Cleary Jacoby Alfery Jacobs, LLC, to Serve as the Conflict Municipal Attorney for the City and Authorizing the Execution of Agreement for Professional Services Associated therewith. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Alright. Now we're on to announcements by the Mayor for his appointments for the Position of Emergency Management Director.
It would be Garrett M. Garberson.
Next is announcement by the Mayor for Mayor's Appointments for the Planning Board. The first one is the Class One Member, which is the Mayor, the Mayor's Designee.
That would be myself, John Moore.
And Class Two Member, Non-Governmental Body Municipal Official for a One-Year Term.
It would be Michael Manzella.
Alright, we're on to comments from the City Council Members.
So I just want to wish everyone out there a very happy 2017. And I just want to take a moment and thank John, and Amy, and Yvonne, and Jessie for believing in me and accepting me as part of the Council. And to Michael, and Kevin, and Fred, and Cindy, and everyone who works diligently in City Hall to make Asbury Park the best it could be. And to thank all of you for your support and, and for continuing to be engaged in the city. So, thank you. And Happy New Year.
I also want to thank you. I want to thank you for trusting us, and I want you to know how honored I am to represent this city. I am honored to serve with this council, and I am so grateful for your support. And I want you to know that going forward, as we've done in the past, we're going to do everything that we can in our power to make this the best city it can be for all of its residents. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to all of you. We thank you for coming out. We appreciate your help throughout the year, and I want to just turn the picture to this council. This is one of the hardest-working councils that I believe they ever been in at Asbury Park. They work together. They have problems. We have our little problems. There are differences in conversations and differences in opinions. But believe me, if you really look into it, you see their hearts, the way they work to get back on this council is just unbelievable. And I'd just like to thank another person too, Mayor Moore's wife, for putting up with me throughout the year. Much as I come over eight, nine, ten o'clock in the morning, she's still got that joy, and she don't put the dog on me, so. I really like to appreciate you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you, appreciate everyone sticking with us. Sometimes it's hard, and a lot of things you may not understand why we do various things, but our hearts are open, the doors are open, and continue to stick with us. And we would do the best we can to make this another joyful, well, for me, two years, for them, three or four years. Thank you very much.
So, I just want to piggyback on what Eileen and Yvonne said. So first and foremost, I want to thank my wife, who begrudgingly allowed me to run again. So, thank you to her. And then there's a few people in the audience that without, we absolutely wouldn't have won, and that's John, Mark, and Meredith. So thank you for all of your support for the last few months. And I want to thank John and Jessie, who tirelessly helped us throughout this campaign. They were, you know, again, without them, we wouldn't have won, and quite frankly, without all of you, we absolutely wouldn't have won. So thank you for not only voting, but hosting and being supportive when we were pulling our hair out. It's very much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Comments from Mayor Moore?
Yeah, I'll be very brief, and of course, I have to thank my wife, because if I don't, Jessie's gonna make me look bad. And I do thank my wife and my family so much for supporting me and supporting the council and let us continue to do this. It's greatly appreciative. I have to sincerely congratulate Eileen, Yvonne, and Amy. Three hard workers and three people whose hearts are for Asbury Park. Same as Jessie and myself, but they had to go through a rigorous campaign to get up here today and get sworn in, and I cannot thank you enough for having the faith in them and us.